Going to order the Monday, May 6, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Thirty-Fourth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekell?
Here.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekell. Any changes, additions? Seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Margaret Grassa, City of Berkeley. I'm a longtime resident. I'm also chairman of the Berkeley Tree Board, and we wanted to let everyone know while they're planting their spring plantings and stuff that we do have a fall planting program for trees. If you call DPW, you can get on the list, and we'll send you more information about the fall planting. They're a good buy for street trees. We're also planning an Arbor Day planting at the Tot Lot, which we hope will soon be opened and finished. That date is yet to be set. It'll be soon this month we'll get the trees in. And I just wanted to encourage everyone to be aware of the trees in the city, and if you have any questions, call DPW. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we will move along to the next order of business, the Consent Agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on April 15, 2013. Item number two, proclamation number P-1013. Matter of approving a proclamation recognizing Angela Church for being selected as 2013 Oakland County High School Teacher of the Year. Item number three, proclamation number P-613. Matter of approving a proclamation designating May 2013 as History Month in the City of Berkeley. Item number four, proclamation number P-713. Matter of approving a proclamation designating May 2013 as Mental Health Month in the City of Berkeley. Item number five, proclamation number P-813. Matter of approving a proclamation designating May 11, 2013, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day. Item number six, proclamation number P-913. Matter of approving a proclamation designating the week of May 12 through the 18, 2013, as Arbor Week.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now we move to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on the regular agenda?
Item number one, recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I have asked the Mayor Protem Turbrak to read proclamation 1013.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Church, will you come up to the microphone, please? This truly is an honor for me, as I've known Angie for a number of years now professionally and personally. She is certainly deserving of this award, and it is my honor to read this. I actually tweeted earlier that I was going to be reading this after I asked the mayor, and you can see how many followers I have.[307.12][307.12](Laughter). None of them came, and there was some talk about trying to get it trending, at least in the school district. I'm not sure if that happened.[313.31][313.31](Laughter). We'll have to check later. But anyway. A proclamation recognizing Angela Church as the 2013 Oakland County Outstanding High School Teacher of the Year. Whereas Angela Church, a Berkeley resident, began her teaching career in 1998 and has been teaching at Berkeley High School since 2000. And whereas Ms. Church, having received a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University and a master's degree from Michigan State University, is a wife and mother of twins who will attend elementary school in the Berkeley School District in the fall of 2013. Whereas Angela Church was selected from a group of eighteen outstanding teachers nominated by a Committee of Education and Community Representatives and evaluated in the following six areas: engaging students, meeting individual student needs, demonstrating knowledge of subject matter, demonstrating classroom management relating to parents and colleagues, demonstrating citizenship, and leadership in the school and the community. And whereas the Oakland County Outstanding Teacher of the Year awards are presented annually to honor and reward teachers in Oakland County who have achieved, through their effort and example, the highest standards of excellence in their profession. The award emerges from the conviction that a quality public education system is essential to the health and vitality of our community. And whereas Ms. Church's peers view her as a model teacher and colleague who is loved by students, parents, and the community, a fantastic teacher who really cares about her students, going out of her way to help them achieve academic excellence. With an open, warm demeanor, she encourages both students and colleagues to take risks and reach for the goals that seem impossible. And whereas the Berkeley City Council and city leaders recognize the importance and great impact that excellent teaching has on the development of future leaders, understanding the daily sacrifice Ms. Church makes to address the concerns and needs of her students. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section One. On behalf of all the citizens of the City of Berkeley, the Berkeley City Council congratulates Ms. Angela Church and thanks her for her dedication and outstanding service to the students in the Berkeley School District. We wish her continued success in her career, knowing that her skills, talents, and abilities will greatly benefit her students for years to come. Proclaim this sixth day of May, 2013, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're on.
I don't know what to say. I really appreciate this opportunity. I feel honored that Cheryl contacted me about being here today. Thank you to all of you. Like Dan said, I live here, I work here, so I've kind of put all my eggs in one basket, and I love Berkeley, and I'm thrilled that my kids are going to go to school in the Berkeley School District, and I'm happy that this award brings some positive recognition to the whole community and the school district. So, thank you.
Do you want to introduce your family that's here with you?
This is my husband, Justin, and this is Owen and Olivia.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Come on up. Come on up this way. We're rolling around here, because we got to cut you on camera. You can't sneak around.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Likewise.
Congratulations.
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 Ashley Dunn.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And now I have asked Councilmember Baker to read proclamation P-613.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's indeed a great pleasure to read this proclamation today in honor of Berkeley Month. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming May 2013 as Berkeley History Month. Whereas in 1819, the first settlers arrived in what is now Oakland County, and in 1825, a four-day steamboat service between Detroit and Buffalo enabled many settlers to shorten their journey west as they made their way from New York to and New Jersey. Travelers were greeted at Red Tavern owned by Mother Handsome at Woodward and Franklin. John Benjamin made his journey from New York and purchased eighty acres of land and built a barn on the site where Roslyn Cemetery now sits. And whereas the settlers continued arriving, building their farms and raising their families. The first school was built in what is now Berkeley in the late 1830s. The first phone line was strung for ten homes along Eleven Mile between Berkeley and Royal Oak. In 1919, a town pump was built and electric lighting arrived. In 1923, Berkeley became a village. And in 1926, the first Berkeley Days was held. And whereas on May 23, 1932, during the Great Depression, and with just under six thousand residents, the Village of Berkeley became a city with a mayor, six commissioners, a city clerk, treasurer, assessor, judge, and constable. And whereas, since its early days, Berkeley has flourished into a city of nearly fifteen thousand residents boasting eight schools, nine parks, a state-of-the-art library, over six thousand homes, a unique downtown, and the title best, most affordable suburb in the United States for 2010. And whereas, history is made every second, every minute, and every hour. And with the dedication of a small group of volunteer members of the Berkeley Historical Committee, its membership gathers information and assembles that information into a format available for us to treasure for years to come. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims, Section One, that the month of May 2013 is hereby proclaimed as Berkeley History Month, and City Council invites every citizen to become acquainted with those who settled here, raised their families, and started their businesses by visiting the Berkeley Historical Museum. And, Section Two, the City Council urges those of us familiar with stories or legends of the early days in Berkeley to please share their accounts and their photos with the members of the committee so that those memories may be retained as treasures for years to come. Proclaim this sixth day of May, 2013, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very important, a quick summary of our history, and it's very nice, and I know that we have a book on the same topic coming out at Berkeley Days, and Councilman Baker is one of the authors of that. We will talk about that a little bit later on. And now I have asked Councilmember Stedman to read proclamation 713.
This is a proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, designating May of 2013 as Mental Health Month, Pathway to Wellness. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims May 2013 as Mental Health Month in the City of Berkeley. The City of Berkeley also calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Berkeley to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Proclaim this sixth day of May, 2013, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, and signed by Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that very important awareness of mental health issues to our attention. And now I have asked Councilmember Kadekell to read proclamation P-813.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, designating May 11, 2013, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day. Whereas American Second Harvest reports that fifty million Americans, approximately one in six, are food insecure, hungry, or at risk of hunger, thirty-seven million, one in eight Americans, receive emergency food assistance from large and small food banks across the nation. And whereas seventeen million children, approximately one in five, and nine million seniors who live in America at the poverty level receive food assistance. One in four people in a soup kitchen line is a child, and whereas poverty adversely affects birth, weight, deaths, abuse, and neglect, education, and the general health of our most precious resource, our children, and affects our seniors. And whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers, NALC, in conjunction with the United States Postal Office, is sponsoring the Twenty-First Annual National Food Drive Day on Saturday, May 11, 2013. And whereas the cost of inaction is too high, particularly in the face of many negative outcomes for our children and community which are preventable. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims that May 11, 2013, is National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day in the City of Berkeley. Further, the City of Berkeley endorses and supports the National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive and publicly advocates that the residents of Berkeley leave non-perishable food at their mailboxes on this day. Introduce and pass at a regular city council meeting on Monday, May 6, 2013, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. I think Councilman Baker pointed out that history is being made every day here in town, and it seems to me that today is proclamation day at city council. As we go to the final proclamation, Councilmember Platt Onson is going to read P-19.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, celebrating the hundred-and-forty-first anniversary of Arbor Day and designating the week of Sunday, May 12 through Saturday, May 18, 2013, as Arbor Week. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and stated, "Other holidays repose upon the past; Arbor Day proposes for the future." And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas the City of Berkeley is proud to be a recipient of the Tree City USA Award for the twenty-third consecutive year, and in 2004, Berkeley became the first community in the state of Michigan to receive the Sterling Award as a leader and innovator in community forestry. And whereas it is the intent of the city council to pledge its commitment to the understanding, education, and support of the global environmental challenge, and therefore to spotlight for our community some of the best things the city can affirm. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims, Section One, that the week of Sunday, May 12 through Saturday, May 18, 2013, be and hereby is designated as Arbor Week in the City of Berkeley, and the city council urges all residents to nurture and care for existing trees as well as plant new ones, and to become aware of how beneficial trees are to the earth's beauty and environment. And Section Two, that Wednesday, May 15, 2013, is hereby proclaimed as Arbor Day in the City of Berkeley, and all residents are urged to support efforts to care for our trees and to support the Berkeley Tree Board, celebrating their twenty-third anniversary, pursuing various programs making the community aware of the importance of trees, bushes, and shrubs. And Section Three, in celebration of the above, the Department of Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Tree Board will be planting two Cleveland pear trees at the recently improved Kiwanis Tot Lot. Proclaim this sixth day of May, 2013, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Prince, could you read item number two on tonight's regular agenda?
Resolution number R-1713, matter of authorizing amendment of the 2012-13 operating budget.
Is there a motion to approve R-1713?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekell. Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm sure you're very familiar with this item. Just for the public's information, this is an item that I will ask our Finance Director to go over in a little bit of detail, and this is going to be in accordance with Public Act II of 1968 as amended. And basically, what the Finance Director is simply going to ask the city council to consider is to amend our budget so that it properly reflects the most up-to-date revenues and expenditures that the city has. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Subouda, so he can go over that information with the city council. Mr. Subouda?
Thank you, Mrs. DeSessa. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'll go through this quickly. We have a number of items across a number of funds. There's $11,000 of new spending in the General Fund and $15,000 of new revenue in the General Fund that you'll be weighing tonight. Also, you have $40,000 of new spending in the special revenues and the enterprise funds, and $78,000 in new revenues in the special revenue and enterprise funds. So with that, the first item, item A, is the General Fund. We're looking at $15,000 in new revenues. All of it has come in, with the exception of the school election of $8,000. That's on an actual basis. Usually, we receive around $8,000. Item B is in the City Clerk's Department within the General Fund. There's some additional expenses because of the third election that we're appropriating for, and approximately $4,000 in the Clerk's area. Item C, the Finance Department, we had a new staffer come on board, one left, new staffer came on board. Fringe benefits shifted a bit, and we're paying for that all out of the General Fund. Excuse me, all out of the Finance Department within the General Fund, so there's a zero effect there. Item D is additional expenses in regards to general liability claims in the city, $3,000. That goes towards our deductibles. Item E, General Fund, public safety expenses within the Public Safety Department, Operations Section, we're paying for additional vehicle and fire truck maintenance, but the department is also making up out of other line items. Item F is new spending. You have $2,000 of Recreation Department, just additional expenditures to run the department. $500 of that is unemployment that we hadn't appropriated for. We're picking up a part-timers cost there. Item G, library expenses. We had purchased a disc repair machine earlier this year, and now the line that that machine came out of is short, and we're going to, in order for the library to spend their normal amount of dollars for the year, that line needs an additional $2,000. Item H, moving into the special revenue funds, is the Major Street Fund. We have additional street maintenance. End of story. We're going to spend $7,300 more before the end of the fiscal year. Item I, local streets. We're going to spend additional $4,600 on street maintenance on the local street system. Item J, $3,100 out of the Solid Waste Fund. We need it just to run the department. It's paying for supplies in that section. Item K, the ice arena. Good news story here. We have $22,000 in new revenue due to a spring season. Spent about $11,000, and yes, it turned out very well. Also, we had a cooler spring, which I think is going to help us with the utility costs. So, we're looking at $11,000 in additional revenues over expenses in the Arena Fund. Item L is the Recreation Revolving Fund. This is another good news story here. People are using our recreation programs. They are signing up. We have additional people coming in that we hadn't anticipated, so revenues and expenses in the Recreation Revolving Fund are up. We also received a corporate donation earlier this year. That's all being factored in, so we have about $50,000 in new revenues in the Recreation Revolving Fund, and we're going to spend about $11,000 due to the increase in population in the programs and the Rec. Revolving Fund, so those two adjustments there. Item M, Senior Recreation Program. This is the final amendment before you this evening, and again, we have people using our programs. So revenues are up by $5,500, and expenses are up by about $3,000. So what you're looking at here is people are using the programs. It's a very good story. And that concludes the budget amendments. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions for our Finance Director, Mayor Protem Turbrak?
It's not a question, actually more of a comment and a thank you, I guess, to the Finance Director and the City Manager for working with the many people that were involved in getting the spring season together. Jeff Fleming, certainly, Tom Caldwell, and everybody else involved in that process. We're starting to see here a little bit of a dividend from that. And then to the Parks and Recreation Department as a whole. I don't know if it's all them who bring in these new people, but it certainly is a testament to the quality of the programs that we're running, and we're doing the right advertising, at least we're bringing people in. So just to point out the good things that that department is doing, Teresa over there as well, Teresa McCarlton, I think very good things for the department, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R-1713?
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, who should be first for Communications?
Councilmember Stedman.
Stedman.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor. Oh, one thing. Don't forget that next, a week from this weekend, is Berkeley Days, and it starts sometime midweek next week. Right?
Got the whole list. We got it coming up.
Councilmember Blanchard.
I would just like to remind everyone that tomorrow is Election Day. There's a school district election, and I know that Cheryl Prince wants to have people go visit her election workers, they won't fall asleep, so please get out there and vote. There's two issues on the ballot. One is the renewal of a non-homestead for the school fund, and another one is a .76 mils for the sinking fund, which we need to keep our schools going, so please get out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick things. The Downtown Development Authority meets on Wednesday to talk about the projects that they are planning and moving forward with. And in addition to the activities that have been described so far, next week also includes earlier in the week, the things that most all of us, I know, are super excited about, and that is, of course, the budget hearings. Our budget hearings are Monday and Tuesday, open to the public. It's important stuff. We went through a flurry of numbers just now, and we've studied this carefully ahead of time. And so as we look to upcoming conversations, it's equally important, it's one of the most important things that us as a council does, is help establish the planned expenditures for the coming year, and it's open to all of us as well to come and check it out and see the kinds of things that are happening. So that's next week. The first game of the soccer, or as they say, football, Team FC Sparta, Michigan, is next Sunday, May 12, 7 o'clock, at Hurley Field. If you want to see our professional, our brand-new professional soccer team play, I would welcome you to come out and see that. Also, transit talk. So thanks to everyone who came out. We've had a couple of transit discussions recently, a town hall to explore options for the Woodward Avenue Rapid Transit Initiatives, so we had a great turnout again. Folks from not only Berkeley, but also Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, Royal Oak, and even beyond, came out to learn and listen and understand and share their ideas and feedback on transit options along Woodward, so I wanted to thank everybody for that. The conversation continues. We've had two sessions so far, and that certainly won't be the last. So as additional sessions are scheduled throughout the coming months here, please stay tuned for more opportunities to weigh in and help see what's going on. And yeah, because your voice is important, helping shape our future here with this. And that leads me to an expression from Mr. John Gardner. John said, "History never looks like history when you're living through it." Again, that's "history never looks like history when you're living through it." And as was mentioned, we'd like to encourage all of us to come out and enjoy the eighty-first anniversary of Berkeley as a city here with the Berkeley Days coming up, and I'm sure there'll be an itinerary of events coming up here. One of the things that you may choose to do is see a copy of the book. This might be discussed a little bit later as well, but we have our very own Arcadia Press book for Berkeley. Today's the first day that it's gone on sale. If you buy it through the city facilities between City Hall and Library and the museum and things like that, the additional revenues will benefit the Historical Committee. As it stands, if you buy it through any commercial outlet, the author proceeds are contributed directly to the Historical Committee Fund, so the authors donated their time and effort to bring this book together, and your support, however you choose to do it, will benefit the Historical Committee to continue to capture those moments that we are living in right here now and today. So however you celebrate Berkeley's history... So however you celebrate Berkeley's history, thank you for helping be a part of it. You guys chose to come to Berkeley as your home. You chose Berkeley as a place to set up your business. That really means a lot, and I want to thank you for that, and here's to celebrating our history together.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Terbrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Stedman mentioned, Berkeley Days is coming up, and I'm going to kind of quickly just go through a rundown of all the, some of the events, I should say. There are many, many events, but it kicks off this Saturday, May eleventh, with the Thirty-Fifth Annual Berkeley Days Race, and I am very proud to say that my lovely bride will be participating in that race. There are far too many K's involved for me to, but I will be there waiting at the finish line for her. Tuesday, May fourteenth, the Berkeley Days Pageant. Wednesday, very important, City Hall versus Dad's Club, Mom's Club softball game, seven o'clock, that's Wednesday, Community Field. We're looking either Community Two or Three. Mr. Christ, I know it says Mr. Sterren, but I'm not sure if, you know, I talked about your golf abilities, but can you play softball?
In a pinch, but maybe no promises.
Consider it a pinch. That will be on Wednesday, Thursday, certainly the Taste of Berkeley, one of our marquee events. That's from seven to nine at the Community Center.
Six.
Six, we better change the calendar on the website. Let's make that six, Taste of Berkeley. The Midway opens up also on Thursday. Friday, there's a number of events. The Midway, of course, will be open. There is the horseshoe pitching that happens that, did we lose that last year? I wasn't a part of that.
By a whisk. Into a sudden death playoff.
I heard there was instant replay, and it was not conclusive, but being the bigger council that we are, we ceded that victory to them. But that is on Friday also, although not part of the Berkeley Days festivities, that is the Public Safety Golf Outing is Friday, May seventeenth, and that I know you are ready for, Mr. Christ. Yes.
Shaking already.
No, make sure you work out your back, because you're going to be carrying a lot of people that day.
At least three of us, I should say.
Continuing on Saturday, too many things for me to mention, but of course, the Midway is open, the craft show, the pooch pageant is in the morning at ten o'clock, punt pass and kick at noon, Michigan Search and Rescue Demonstration, the beer tent will be open as well that evening, and then we'll move on to Sunday. If I'm leaving anything out, I apologize. There are just so many things. Again, Sunday, the conclusion of Berkeley Days, VFW Pancake Breakfast. They're also going to have the VFW Flag Collection and Sales, the used book sale that day. Craft Show will be ongoing, Petting Zoo for the Youngsters, horseshoe tournament for, if we want to learn how to play horseshoes, or pitch horseshoes, maybe we should watch that. And a raffle, big raffle will be at the end of the day. So again, a lot of events coming up. It's a very special week for Berkeley. Every year, as Steve mentioned, what number is this?
It's eighty-first year as a city.
Eighty-first year as a city is what we're celebrating this year. Get that fancy book, very important, and try to get the authors to sign it for you. Planning on doing that myself.
Excellent.
Everybody enjoy Berkeley Days. It should be a great time, and hopefully the weather will cooperate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Platt Onson.
I think if I talk long enough, that our comments can exceed the length of the meeting, so let me see what I can do about that.
No reason to.
Actually, just two quick things. One, I wanted to recognize the hard work of the Tree Board and the DPW, who work so closely together to maintain the city trees, our street trees. One of the things that makes Berkeley so lovely to live in and, you know, walk our city streets is those big, beautiful street trees, the tree planning program, the work that goes into the Tree City USA designation, so I wanted to thank them for all of their hard work and cooperation. And then, as if there wasn't enough going on next week, the Environmental Advisory Committee is holding their annual Bike Dinner Cruise on Wednesday. Riders should meet at the Community Center at six-thirty. They're going to ride the bike route and hit Beggar Dave's for dinner. There will be a shorter route for families with children, so all ages are welcome. And if by slight chance it rains, which we know it won't, because Berkeley Days is bound to have amazing weather one of these years, then the makeup day will be Wednesday, May twenty-second. If you want to know, it's looking a little iffy outside, follow them on Facebook, you'll be able to get updates on the event. So Environmental Advisory Committee is on Facebook, Wednesday, May fifteenth is the ride. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kedekel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, it's great to look out in the audience and see Gary and Tammy Polk here with us this evening. Gary, after those few hurdles you've made, you're doing a great job, and I know you're going to listen to the doctor. On April twenty-seventh, you know, I spoke about it, and many of us spoke about the dedication that was about to take place. And again, former Mayor Protem Dale Goodcourage did a remarkable job. It was a wonderful, moving ceremony in memory and honor of Staff Sergeant Matthew Leach, and it was great to be there with his family, and some of my colleagues were there, and I later on attended the pub crawl in Ferndale, and that too was quite a success. So thank you, Mr. Goodcourage. Taste of Berkeley is actually this Thursday, as Mayor Protem, Protem, Terbrecht, sorry, Mayor Protem Terbrecht mentioned, it is from six to nine. It will be at the Community Center. We have a lot of great restaurants slash bakeries that are going to be there, a lot of new ones that are just, that have just moved into town. The cost is twenty-five dollars. It's for adults only, as the American Legion will be serving wine. For tickets, you can call me at two-four-eight, four-zero-eight, one-seven-nine-three. You can also purchase them at the Lunch Cafe, and you can email Lindsay Scheel, the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance Secretary, at L Scheel, that's L-S-C-H-E-E-L, at Berkeley Schools dot org. Just to remind the people what this event is all about, last year we were able to send many, many children to camp that would have not been able to go if not from the proceeds of this event. So I look forward to seeing all of you there. And as Councilmember Blanchard mentioned about the vote tomorrow, I want to wish Ms. Prince luck, but I also want to thank all of the volunteers that come out and helped her at that time. A reminder, there's an event over at the high school, starting at seven o'clock tomorrow evening. There's a cantata, the Anne Frank Cantata, and parking is going to be very, very difficult, and they are going to be having shuttles going from the ice arena area, from the Robina parking lot, free of charge, to the high school if you arrive there and you can't find a parking spot. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Sessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that I'll be attending the show that the school's going to be doing, so thank you for the parking. It's going to be tough, even though we're here early, so thank you very much. You know, I, many of you all have mentioned so many of the things that I wanted to talk about, but just for the public, I know that one of my favorite times is budget season, and I'm kidding, but it is one of the most important things that we do. And for the public out there, we will be holding our budget work sessions starting on Monday, May the thirteenth, and Tuesday, May the fourteenth. And we also have set aside the fifteenth, just in case the city council needs additional time, so residents, please join us on those days. And all this information is available on the website, too, so if you have any questions. I'd also like to welcome our acting city attorney, or assistant city attorney, I don't really know what your title is right now, Dan, but he is welcome to Berkeley, Mr. Dan Christ, and he has been keeping informed on everything that's been going on. As a matter of fact, city council and to the public out there, both him and Mr. Sterren, so far, they've been doing a very good job at keeping informed on all the various issues that the city has been involved in. And Mr. Christ met with both myself and the city clerk to go over, even though this is a small agenda for tonight, but he wanted to make sure that he was prepared, and so I thank him for his time, so very, very good. We're not having a staff meeting tomorrow because of the election, so you lucked out. Also, to let the public know that on May seventeenth, Public Safety is having their golf outing. It is a very, very important event for our public safety officers. Any funds that they raise at that event go to fund the Lids for Kids, and that is a program that, in which they'll provide helmets and things of that sort for young people out there. And so, anybody, again, any questions, please go to our website. And lastly, I'd like to just simply congratulate Ms. Angela Church for getting such an amazing, amazing award. I remember going to school and all the wonderful things that I have memories of all my teachers, and to be given such an award, and coming from Berkeley, it just gives me a lot of pride, and I want to thank her for being such a great teacher. She will certainly have a big impact on the future. And I, too, would also like to thank my appreciation for the Tree Committee. They do so much. I see them at the various programs that the city provides, and again, they're just volunteers, as they say, and I don't know what I'd do without you all, so thank you very much, please, for all your hard work. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Subouda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Baker's comments regarding the budget session and Mrs. DeSessa's comments on the budget session. Please remember that the hearings are held at the Public Safety Department, second floor, and at six-thirty PM. They won't be held here, and again, it's very important, and we've got a lot of information that we're going to be covering, so six-thirty, we start, Public Safety Building. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we come to our attorney. Mr. Dan Christ is the prosecutor principally for the city, and he's sitting in this evening, and we welcome you.
Well, Mayor, thank you very much, and I'd like to thank council and staff for the warm welcome that both myself and John Sterren have felt in assisting the city of Berkeley. One brief item of note for council and for the residents, the House Bill Forty Thirty-seven was forwarded to the governor today. That particular bit of legislation is expected to pass, but what that does is it allows for veterans, military veterans, to have, it orders the Secretary of State to provide for designation of that representation of veteran status to be placed on their license. It also requires the Secretary of State to provide a process to verify the honorable service of the particular individual. So that, a number of residents, I'm sure, will be following that legislation. Hasn't been signed yet, but it should be within the next few days. And I have nothing further.
Very good. Thank you very much. Well, I have very little to say, largely because my colleagues have adequately covered all the essential topics. Just to add our congratulations to Mrs. Church. That is an amazing achievement in a school district that is nationally honored for its achievements, to be selected amongst all those excellent teachers as the Oakland County High School Teacher of the Year. One is reminded of the injunction of scripture, "They that instruct many to justice shall shine as stars for all eternity." It is a great talent and a great blessing. Several of us up here are teachers, are former teachers, and we have enormous respect for those who dedicate their lives to the education of the next generation. We are greatly indebted to them. And on that note, is our motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kedekel.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Here, I mean, excuse me, yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The May sixth meeting has been adjourned.